We're in a good place with good folks and good first responders. All right, the time is 9:34, and we're going to review, item number one, the review and the approval of minutes.
I move, we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Cook, and there's a second by Commissioner Bolz. Any additions or corrections? None being seen. All those in favor passes unanimously. Now, we want to hear the audit report from Nathan Zenzinmeyer. Where's Nathan at today?
For his stand-in.
Oh, Nathan's substitute today is Ms. Julie Kiley, our county auditor. Thank you, Ms. Kiley, for blessing us with your presence today.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Yes, we have Nathan at some County Investment Academy training this week, and hopefully he'll complete his certification in that by Friday. You received an email last night that I need to note some corrections to. We actually made some corrections to the summary of additional transactions this morning. The copy I placed before you is the correct one. So I'll start out with the March 4 funding report, which was emailed on Friday. That totals $6,723,746.87. The summary of additional transactions, we had three addendums, two wires, three quick payments, and one benefit payment. The correction was in the area of the addendums with an increase of $22,944.43, which was payments to JP Morgan Chase, our county P card program. So that new total was $126,465.33. It brings the entire total of the summary of additional transactions to $553,571.34 for a total funding of $7,277,318.21.
There's a motion by Commissioner Covey. There's a second by Commissioner Cook. No comments. All those in favor of Bill Peas presented passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Members of the court, Bill Kilberlaw, why don't you go ahead and make your way up? You're the only one that has signed up today, and when you get up here, you and I'll discuss how much time you get. Members of the court, I did receive a correction on item 28. I think you all have the same piece of paper, but for the benefit of the audience that's here, page 28 is subdivision regulations, and there is one correction on page 82. And the correction is as stated, the county plat's records fee with the correction shall be paid at the recording office pursuant to the Williamson County Clerk's fee schedule. And so I think that is the language that was intended to be in there. I believe that's the only correction for item 28.
Page 39 has a type in shoulder.
Page 39.
And I think, I tried to send it, maybe you were full, and today it shows back up in this weird format and asked me, do you want me to save this? And I went, okay, and then I couldn't find it. So, page 39.
Page 39, the word shoulder, like head and shoulders.
That's right.
All right. Now, Mr. Kilberlaw, you have, let's talk about this, you have five minutes, you've signed up for item 28 and 29, but you also signed up for public comment for non-agenda items, which is an additional two minutes. And if you don't object, I just assumed you'd do it all now, since you're sitting there, and we don't bring you back later. But that'd give you a total of seven minutes, if you're okay with that.
Bill Kilberlaw, Williamson County, sixth generation Texan, retired Navy, been in Williamson County. First moved here in 1979, more than 45 years ago. My concerns with the new policy is that there's too much vagary in some of the definitions and broadness. And having looked at the experience over many decades of government agencies taking vague wording and using it whenever they feel like it to illogical extreme, I feel that some of this wording needs to be bounded and corrected, specifically item 2.56, any devices, systems which are used in the supply of collection, development, protection, storage, transmission, treatment, and/or retail distribution of water for safe human use and consumption. Way too broad. It needs to be limited to a specific definition of subdivisions, commercial developments, not private places. But when you go to 2.15, it gets even worse, is all water distributed by an agency or individual, public or private, for the purpose of human consumption, use and preparation of food, beverage, cleaning utensils used in the course of preparation and consumption of food, beverages, human beings, human bathing, clothes washing. Unbounded, it needs to be fixed because I have all those things on my property. Any water system supply for waste domestic purpose, et cetera, et cetera, item 2.3. It's not clear in this document that this doesn't apply to myself. One example is if I decide to deed a piece of my property to a friend or a family member and allow them to use part of my water system, it's not clear that that transaction, one, is not a subdivision, because that definition is very vague, and it's not clear that some bureaucrat would come in there and want to start doing something with my water system because I'm having a personal transaction. So this kind of gets back to all of the basic concepts of, you know, what is the law and what's into the code? We've got a whole bunch of stuff in Texas, as well as federal registers, that items are unconstitutional, things being used by agencies. So the fundamentals are, when you look at the U.S. Constitution, Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution says it's a supreme law only in, that's in pursuit thereof, which is referring to the Constitution. This is where people get out, and especially agencies and bureaucrats who get into a government position and think they have more power than they actually do. The Ninth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States specifically says, just because all of the rights of people aren't enumerated in the Constitution, that their government cannot make an assumption that they can take rights and control them. Then in the Tenth Amendment, it gets even more specific and says that the government only has the powers that are enumerated in the Constitution. And we've had two Supreme Court decisions in 2024 that reestablished that, that the agencies were out of control. That includes state agencies as well. In the Texas Constitution, Article 1, these are protections for the citizens. It's called the Texas Bill of Rights, basically. Section 16 mimics also Article 1 in the U.S. Constitution on the sanctity of contracts. The only contracts affecting my property is that which I have with a state from the Vetland Commission, and one easement that I granted to the power company. It also goes on in section 29 and says that any laws, rules, agencies, ordinances that are not consistent with Article 1 are automatically void and unenforceable. So my whole point that I'm making here is that some wording needs to be added to make it clear that this is not infringing upon private property, that it's only really intended for actual commercial developments, and that just by myself deeding a piece of my property, whether it's Williamson County or any other counties, does not constitute a subdivision, regardless of who I deed it over to. So the wording is way too vague. It needs to be cleaned up before you approve it and publish it and try and start enforcing it. And also, anytime you implement one of these, there needs to be adequate training of the county employees who are going to enforce these to make sure that they understand their limitations and responsibilities and power. The other item, 29, kind of hit me, is creating career ladders. I have never found anywhere in the Texas or U.S. Constitution where the government's in charge of creating careers. They're there to protect business so that business can create careers, educational programs can create careers, but I've never seen that power given to the government again back to the Ninth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. You can't imply you have control of something that you haven't been given enumerated specific power to do. And non-agenda items, I left my notes at home on that because I didn't think we'd get to that today anyway, but that's also reserved for being able to make comments based on others' comments throughout the course of the meeting. So anyway, in summary, this thing needs more work before you publish it for prime time.
All right, thank you. Members of the court, the time is 9:45.
Yay.
Need Jim Dillon here.
The time is 9:45 a.m. I call it the Jim Dillon door, Valerie, ever since he ripped it open, remember? And the truth is, the hinge is broken, and look at the fix our IT staff put in there, those little pieces of paper. Now, if the winds get really strong, that might not be the side of the courtroom. I'd be happy to sit on, but hey, the good news is I've got my phone and I'll take good pictures of whatever. You guys take pictures of us all of the time. I can do the same thing. 9:45 a.m. And what I'd like to do is move to item number 27 and conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the Williamson County subdivision regulations pursuant to the authority of chapter 232 of the Texas Governmental Code. Before we have comment for public hearing, once the public comment has ended, I have invited David Glenn from the Home Builders Association, and of course, Adam Boatright from our team, to come up and speak to these matters. So if you guys would just kind of stay where you're at, and let's see if there's other public comment regarding the proposed amendments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on for or against the proposed amendments to the Williamson County subdivision regulations? If you would, yes, sir. Bill, you can come on up and take a seat.
I'd like to do it after your two guests speak.
Well, I can't, Bill, I can't let you do that. The public hearing's got to be, House says the public hearing's got to be first, so we get your feedback to make an informed decision. I'm just following the rules that your attorney forces us to do. Is there anybody here wishing to speak? Bill, did you want to speak to the?
I've already spoken.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. All right. Is there anybody else that wishing to speak at the public hearing in relation to subdivision regulations? Going once, going twice, none being seen? So the public hearings concluded at 9:47 a.m. Let's move on to item number 28 at this time. Adam, and if you would come up, and David, if you would come up as well, too. And members of the court, I want you to know that I personally invited David, and Valerie, Commissioner Covey, you will remember this, but when we first met David some 12 years ago, he was, I believe, the Legislative Director for State Representative Marsha Forni. And he has since gone on to great things with the Home Builders Association and is well-respected. But in fact, he is departing them in the next days, and so I really insisted that he be here today so I could publicly thank him for his service, not only to the representative, but David, you've done an amazing service to Texas through the Home Builders Association, so really grateful for that, and I'm glad you're here today, and we're excited about your future as well. Adam, go ahead and talk to us about these proposed changes.
Good morning. Adam Boatright, Williamson County Engineers. Judge Commissioners, in item 28 before you, we have some proposed amendments to the Williamson County subdivision regulations. These are things that me and my staff started looking at during the last calendar year. You know, Williamson County has had good rules for development, but we were looking at additional areas to address public health and safety. And in November of last year, we produced a set of red line amendments, and we distributed those to the development community and posted them on the county's website for review and And starting in November and leading all the way up until, basically Thursday of last week, I and some of y'all met with every single individual that submitted a comment. There were a total of 16 meetings. There were 70 people, individuals that attended those meetings, and I am very gracious of the over 200 hours that the community donated their time to help us work on these rules and make them better. So I'll quickly run through some of the highlights of the changes proposed. So turn lanes and traffic impact analyses. So these are things that we have not had as a part of our rules in the past. And as everyone knows, we're in a booming area and development is very rapid. For public health and safety, we really need to include a turn lane and TIA requirement as part of our subdivision regulations. Now, not each and every development will trigger these requirements. It's the larger developments. The very small developments will not trigger these requirements. But the larger developments will, and they'll be required to provide necessary safety improvements to address any impacts due to their development. Further, we are recommending some additional requirements for water and wastewater. As water continues to be a challenge around the county, we are asking for firm written commitments from the water providers to these proposed subdivisions. If there is off-site infrastructure or other major infrastructure required, that either construction or bonding of that infrastructure take place prior to approval of a final plat, and that any necessary permits for creating a water system or wastewater permits be in place prior to approval of a final plat. Further, on floodplain, due to the availability of the county's Atlas 14 floodplain study, many developments will be able to utilize our data going forward, once that study is completely final, which is really close, but once it's final. This will be a benefit to many developments, especially the smaller, what sometimes we refer to as the mom-and-pop subdivisions. So a small subdivision, someone would like to take 20 acres and carve it up and sell, you know, a small number of lots. In the past, they would have to hire their own engineer to conduct a floodplain study, which can be costly for that type of development. And those projects will be able to utilize the county's Atlas 14 floodplain study in lieu of hiring their own engineer. Further, we have entered into a corridor agreement with Tech dot for our transportation corridors that have been studied around the county, and that will be documented within our subdivision regulations. And then we're clarifying the county's existing position on new muds and the maintenance of the subdivision roads within those muds. And then lastly, some legislative changes that we're constantly in an environment of the legislature, making revisions to state law and how that impacts subdivisions and subdivision rules. And so there are a couple of items in there addressing legislative changes. So as part of these meetings with all of the stakeholders that submitted comments, you know, there were quite a few community concerns and comments when we started out with our first draft in November. We have met with each and every one of those individuals with a goal to try to find some common ground, that the county needed to address some important health and safety items, but we wanted to work with our development partners so that we could have good development, continue to have good development in Williamson County. And in my humble opinion, there were compromises that were found throughout that process, and we were able to address as many comments and concerns to the extent possible. With that, staff would recommend approval of the proposed amendments, and I'm available to take any questions or comments.
Just to clarify on the TIA, we now have it where it's part of our regs to do one, but if you, you can opt out of it if you agree that a decel lane, for example, needs to be placed, so that you don't have to pay for a TIA and the improvements. I think we've made it very flexible in that regard. But we do want the larger developments to help us and make sure that it's safe for everyone traveling.
That is correct, Commissioner. We have that provision.
I want to, David, if you would, go ahead and introduce yourself for the record. I know that you represent the stakeholders, and so give us your feedback. This is your last chance to have a voice in Williamson County in relation to subdivision rules and regulations.
Yes, thank you, Judge. David Glenn, Senior Director of Government Relations with the Home Builders Association. Thank you so much for the time today, and I appreciate all of your time and attention on this. And equally as important, your flexibility in letting Adam spend so much time with us. We, as Adam mentioned, there was a lot of concern when this first came out, but he was very receptive to our concerns, and we had many meetings where we found a lot of compromises that worked very well. Commissioner Covey, the one you mentioned is great. In fact, that's a flexibility we don't get in other counties. So I think it does make a lot of sense, and certainly appreciate Adam's willingness to sit down with us and work through that. You know, I'm just the government relations guy, get a couple of these engineers in the room, and it gets over my head pretty quick, but it was, it was great to see a team of collaborate, an environment of collaboration, and I'm happy with where we landed.
I want to, I did have a meeting with, I guess, six or eight individuals representing the development community and home builders community along with you and Adam last week, and I understand that there were meetings that occurred with commissioners as well. Adam, I want to say this, in county government, we cannot always acquiesce and do what everyone wants us to do, right? I mean, there, we have responsibilities and fiduciary responsibilities to do things and stand strong on certain issues and policies. But there are also things that we can compromise and collaborate and work together on. And your leadership on this issue over the last year would be a wonderful example for every county in Texas to take up and learn from. Now, your patience with some of these developers is much greater than my patience, because most of, most of them are pretty confident in who they are and how important they are. And you seem to deal really well with all of the personalities in the room. And I think more importantly, I think you represented Williamson County really well. And I'm grateful for your leadership, and I know it cost us 200 hours, but sometimes collaboration, the 200 hours of work that we put in may have saved us 20 lawsuits. And time really is money.
And lives.
And lives. And so I'm really pleased, I'm really pleased with the water piece that's in there, right? When they provide that final plant, am I using the right semantics? You know, they've got to have a path for how that water's going to be there. And so I think we're taking some really good, I think, Val, I get the words wrong, but the exit, the.
Egress, egress.
Yeah, the lanes, the deceleration lane, that's the word I was looking for. The longer I sit here, the more I know that those lanes do nothing but save lives.
Yeah, or reduce accidents.
Reduce accidents, right? Well, and as a JP who has been to plenty of traffic fatalities where those lanes didn't exist, I'm pretty grateful for the effort. You guys have done a good job. Again, David, I just want to tell you thank you for serving our Texas well, and good luck in your newest endeavor. Does anybody else have questions for other of these guys?
I just have a couple. You know, this collaboration is really important, and let me explain to you why, is, because I get asked a lot, because there's a lot of growth in the county, a lot of growth in my precinct. We have some muds coming in, some large muds that'll add thousands of homes. And I get asked the question, well, Russ, who's in charge? Who's in charge of this? And, you know, I have to, I have to explain. I said, you know, we live in a capitalistic society, and the authority that the county has is limited, and the authority cities have is limited. And when the, when the conditions say there's supposed to be 500 or 1,000 homes someplace, that's what's going to happen, right? And the real question is, is it going to be in a city or is it going to be in a county? Because the homes are going to come, right? That's why, what living in a capitalistic society means. And more and more developers are choosing to develop those homes in the county, more than ever before, more than we have contemplated in the past. And so with those additions, the county has, you know, what, what used to be just a little subdivision development in the county has turned into a lot. And so we have to get a little better, put in a little more guards into it, because it's gone beyond what we typically have seen. I like to say the fastest-growing city in Williamson County is Williamson County. We are putting more homes on the ground in the county than in the cities. And so when we have good feedback from our home builders, and, because it doesn't do us any good to put in regulations that makes their development unsuccessful and unsafe. That's not the goal either. And so when we can, we can work with them and find what can we do to work together, this is great. And so, and I know there's been a lot of good conversation, and, you know, one of the things that when I talk to developers, and this is key, is, is they ask me, well, how come the county's doing this or that? Because I'm about to bring in a subdivision that's going to bring in hundreds of millions of dollars onto the tax rolls. And I have to take that extra step and explain that the way the county has it set up, I'm sorry, the way the state has it, that's how boring this is, that the windows are honking. But there's a certain point to where it doesn't matter if we bring in 500 new homes or 10,000 new homes, and the taxes that they bring with them, there's a point where the state says, county, you have to, you have to, it's, generally, it's three and a half percent more dollars this year than last year. And once we get to that point, we stop collecting tax dollars, and in turn, we reduce the tax rate. What that means is, as these developments come in, we don't really have any more money, I mean, other than the plan three and a half percent, to address the roads and the safety concerns than we did before. And so that's one of the big limitations that we see, is that while we see these new developments come in that have costs associated with it, often that doesn't necessarily result in more tax levy, it results in a lower tax rate for our citizens. And so that's, those are the forces that we see driving us to where we are today. And I'm sorry, that was a little boring, but it's what's at the heart of all of this.
I just want to thank you, Adam, for all your time that you've put into this, and the fact that we've been, I've been a part of several meetings with the development community. I want to thank them also for their, the way that they handled themselves in what could have been an ugly meetings, it wasn't. It was very productive, they were productive, I felt. And we were able to clarify some language, which I think most of the, most of the issues were, how is this going to impact their development? And we were able to work out, especially water, wastewater. I know the mud issue is the heart of the concern of the development community that wants to develop the rest of the county, our county as a mud, as muds, which in effect are little cities, because they're going to have elected boards, they collect tax, they do, they can do just about anything a city can do. And our concern was the sustainability of the county with the tax structure that we have. And so trying to work that out in a method that will work for both, I think, was the goal, and we have, I think, accomplished that. David, thank you for your service, and thank you for the fact that the Home Builders Association was able to come to the table and help sit alongside us and work out some of these issues. So thank you very much. I move to approve this item.
There's a motion by Commissioner Cook, there's.
With the correction. Covey, Covey, and with the correction.
Commissioner, would you set the friendly amendment of move to approve with an effective date of March 4, 2025?
March 4 is today.
Today.
Yes, it is effective today.
There's a motion by Commissioner Covey to.
I'll second.
Implement the subdivision rules and regulations with the one note.
The correction.
As previously stated.
And the correction with the spelling.
And March 4 start date, and then the spell correction of the word shoulder.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Cook seconded that. Any other discussion? Did I get everything included in that motion?
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Before I. Before we vote, and I suspect it will be unanimous, my colleagues all have their own opinion, a real testament to the success is how many developers and home builders and residents are not here complaining about what we're doing, right? This will seem like a boring motion, but it's only a boring motion because of the labor that you and your team put into this.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners.
All right, members of the court, I move the adoption of item number three through twenty-one.
I'll second. Okay.
Second by Bolz. All right. Any comments on three through twenty-one? None being seen. All those in favor, passes unanimously. I move the adoption of item twenty-two through item twenty-six, and then item twenty-nine through item thirty-three.
Second.
There's a motion on items twenty-three through twenty-six and twenty-nine.
Is it twenty-two?
Thank you, Val. Twenty-two through twenty-six, and then twenty-nine through thirty-three, and it was seconded by Commissioner Bolz.
That's my second.
All right. Is there any, any comment? None being seen. All those in favor of the motion as presented, pass as unanimously. Give me just a moment. All right, the time is ten oh-six a.m., and we're going to move to executive session to discuss real estate matters, or potential deliberation on real estate matters, as posted on item thirty-four. Item thirty-five, discuss economic development negotiations pursuant to the Texas Governmental Code. And then item number thirty-six. Those will be the items that we'll consider in executive session, members of the court. I think we have just three or four items to discuss, but we could be out of here soon if we all go there now. Thank you. Time is ten fifty a.m., and we're reconvening from executive session, and I believe there is no action for the court to consider. So this session of Commissioners' Court is adjourned at ten fifty-one a.m. here on March the fourth.